Town of Air zoning board of appeals. Wednesday, September twentieth, twenty twenty-three, six P M. Remote participation meeting agenda as amended. In accordance to chapter two of the Acts of twenty twenty-three suspending certain provisions, the open meeting law O M L. Public bodies otherwise governed by the O M R temporarily relieved from the requirements that meet. Meetings be held in public places, open and physically accessible to the public. So long as measures are taken to ensure public access to the body's deliberation. Through adequate and alternative means, this meeting will be live on Zoom. The public may participate remotely by joining Zoom meeting I D. Number eight, five, seven, nine, seven, two, eight, seven, one, seven, seven. Or by calling three, one, two, six, two, six, six, seven, nine, nine. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Samantha Benoit. Administrative coordinator at C B A at air dot M A dot U S. Or nine, seven, eight, seven, seven, two, eight, two, two, zero, extension one, one, four prior to the meeting. All right, we'll call the meeting to order at six P M. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. State your name, please.
Jessica Gino, aye.
Mike Gibbons, aye.
I know, sir.
Ron DeFilippo, aye.
Sam Goodwin, aye. All right. Next item on the agenda is the bond reduction for the Willows. Um, I don't think there's a presentation or anything.
No.
No, it's just that there's the letter.
Yeah, there's two letters. Um, it's a no, that's the old one. Sorry.
Yeah.
Hold on. Yeah, here's the new one.
Yeah.
So it is just a request um to close out.
Uh, this is, this is, this is that project been been done for quite a while. And this was, this was the last part of the retention. Is that correct?
Yep, this is the last bit of it. Um. So this was uh submitted by Matt Hernan, the town engineer, and this is the request for the vote, uh, the board to vote to.
He reviewed the closeout documents, the ASBILs and W P A forms, C S C. So everything is completed as required.
Mm hmm.
So it's up to us to release the remaining fifty one hundred and thirty dollars from the bond.
Yep. So.
Anybody care to any comments? Questions?
Nope.
Um, so I make a motion, please.
I make a motion. Uh, to release the remaining bond in the amount of fifty uh five thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars for the Willows.
Second.
All those in favors signify by saying aye. State your name, please.
Jessica Gino, aye.
Mike Gibbons, aye.
John also.
Ron, Ron DeFilippo, aye.
Sam Goodwin, aye. Okay, that's done. What do you do now, Sam Samantha? You send them a letter or?
Yeah, uh, so this is one from twenty fifteen. I'll just write a similar letter um and I will. Um, I may need your signature, Sam, for it. Um, and then I will give it to, I believe, Barbara, the fresher, so.
Yep. All right, fair enough.
And she'll take care of that.
Okay. Next item on the agenda.
Motion, motion, motion to close, close the uh, we don't have a hearing for that.
Didn't have, no, there was no hearing on that, John.
Okay, we're good.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda. Public hearing application for special permit. All right, let me get to that part.
I do have it on the screen if you can see it, so.
Yeah, I do, but uh. Uh, public hearing notice, A R Z B A will conduct a remote public hearing at six P M. Six oh five P M. On Wednesday, September twentieth, twenty twenty-three regarding. An application submitted by D M G Investments L L C. For the property located at two oh one to two oh five West Main Street, A R Mass. Applicant is seeking special permit to build within the floodplain overlay district pursuant. To air zoning bylaw, section eight point two point five point eight point one. Section eight point two point five. Point eight point two use and regulation of floodplain overlay district. And section eight point two point five point C point two uses allowed by special permit in the floodplain overlay district. Or Zoom call in information, please contact A R Z B A. No, please contact Z B A at air dot M A dot U S. Or nine, seven, eight, seven, seven, two, eight, two, two, zero, extension one, one, four. As advertised, September sixth, twenty twenty-three and September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Now I saw attorney Gibbons in there. I think attorney Gibbons, are you representing this?
Oops, sorry about that. Had trouble getting off mute. Uh, yes, I am representing uh D M G on this.
How did you um? I didn't, do we have a letter?
Yep, there's a letter. Uh, da, da, da. Uh, from the property owner giving permission.
No.
D M G to submit the application.
Do we have something from D M G authorizing attorney Gibbons to speak in their behalf?
Well, with me tonight is uh Keon Hamel from D M G and Drew Galvin from Bowler Engineering, so.
We don't need it in writing is what you're saying.
No.
All right. You're up, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. As you know, my name is Tom Gibbons and I represent the M G Investment L L C. Which has the property located at two oh one to two oh five West Main Street under agreement for purchase. You may recall this proposed development because we were before this board um a few months back and obtained variances for lot width and building height. Um, we have filed the site plan review and special permit applications with the planning board. And a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission, and those public hearings are ongoing. Uh, we're before you tonight uh for the special per for a special permit for construction in the floodplain overlay district. Under the air zoning bylaw, section eight point two. As I mentioned, Drew Garvin is with me tonight. He's project manager from Bowler Engineering. And he's going to take you through uh the the plan and why we're, what portion of the project requires us to seek a special permit from you tonight. And Drew, I I believe I saw Drew on the online here.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay.
Uh, Sam, am I able to share a screen?
Uh, you. And. Um, yeah, let me just stop sharing and then you should be able to um.
You have the plan up while I review it.
Sam, I turn screen sharing on for everybody.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, I've called up and click. I've called up my screen showing the plan. Can everyone see that?
Yep.
Uh, just a brief uh. Reiteration of the project. Uh, like Tom said, we, I know we met with you before. You're probably familiar with it. Um, the site is about uh fourteen and a half acres made up of two lots. And we're proposing um. In the, in the rear of the lot is wetlands, as well as its associated buffer zones and the uh floodplain. Line at elevation two seventeen point one, uh, which has been surveyed and located uh on the site. We are proposing to build a uh multi-use retail. First floor retail facilities that front West Main Street uh with some ground floor parking. Behind it as well as uh three floors of residential units above it, above that parking. Um, and to do so, we have uh sort of framed the site and its associated parking. With uh some retaining walls uh to help with the elevations as it banks down towards the wetland. Um, and provided uh per the fire department's request. A uh emergency access around here, around the this rear side framed again by this retaining wall. Uh, those two areas are, I think, the areas in question as far as the floodplain overlay. Uh, this corner has been built up to provide that access. And you can see the floodplain line clipping it here. And then we just kind of rub up against it here uh with this wall framing this parking and access drive area. Um, and again, these walls are are necessary for the grades and we wanted to. Uh, kind of create a, create a protection to that overlay district uh to to limit disturbance as best as possible for this project. Um. Other than that, uh, just to kind of for clarification purposes. Uh, I know we received some comments from town board. There is some uh snow storage areas. We've provided a small snow storage area in the rear here, as well as some snow storage area in this vicinity.
Excuse me, wait a minute. I thought, I thought that. One of the prerequisites, there would be no snow storage on site.
No, that's why I wanted to clarify. We we've provided some snow storage, as I've just outlined, on site. I know the Conservation Commission. Uh, language was kind of conflicting. Uh, so to clarify, there are two small areas. And in the cases of extreme storms, we would uh have that snow removed from the site. For a maintenance plan for the building.
No, I I'm talking about when you guys were before us before. I distinctly remember there was a conversation about snow storage and there wouldn't be any on site. So now this has changed?
Yeah, I don't, I I don't recall that being a change, but.
On the, on the responses from the other boards. The Conservation Commission says. Um. That there will be no S. D M G agreed not to have snow storage on site.
That was at the, that was for the original one, John? Or was it, is that on the revision? I remember them saying there weren't, there wouldn't be any snow storage on site. Because we questioned that.
Well, they, they met with the conservation. Back in Ju- uh July and August.
Were you there?
Yeah.
Speak to it.
At that time, uh, we did express concerns about snow storage and our chair had said, why don't we? Make sure in the operations and maintenance procedures that there would be no snow storage on site.
Correct.
But that's, that's, and that's, that is an ongoing application before us, so.
So. Why would we approve this if it's an ongoing application with you?
I don't think the snow storage is relevant necessarily to this application unless the snow storage is within that floodplain district.
Well, that's, that's, see, that's, that's the hard part, Mike. Okay, because what we're looking at is obviously not the same thing as we originally saw.
Can I just interrupt for a second and can Keon uh the uh representative from D M G be unmuted so he can chime in on this as well?
Why don't you let us finish discussing this and then we'll let you listen, then we'll listen.
Mister Chair.
Yes, sir.
This is, this is also an open. Request to the planning board. And they went to be uh before the planning board. In uh July, August. And it's still open for, it's been continued since July. And now it's, it's on the agenda for April twenty, and it was on April twenty-second and it got continued again. So they have the same application for this permit. As an open item before the planning board.
Well, the planning board can't do this. It's us.
Well, it's on their jet, it's on their agenda and they've been, and they've been asking for continuance since July. And they, they go, they go every month.
I, I, I don't, let's just hold on, let's back the bus up for a minute. Let me, let's see if we can get this squared away at first. Okay, Jess, you were there. What was the discussion?
Uh, there at the conservation, yeah. Conservation, uh, we have deferred making a final decision because it was still before the planning board for site plan review. So some other permitting that doesn't come before zoning board, I think, including the parking variance.
Uh, no, the parking variance goes to the planning board. We already know that.
Yeah, that's what I mean. So we deferred making any uh taking a vote on issuing an order of conditions. Uh, because the plans might be revised based on the site plan review with the planning board.
So you're saying the conservation did not. Require them to have off-site storage for the snow.
That was our last discussion. We, and back in August, we haven't seen them since then. It's been continued. Based on waiting for the planning board and final, final plans. But that was our request back in August.
Now, to your point, Mike, you're kind of correct. It's not germane to what we're looking at. However, this is a change from what we looked at originally, so. If. If we go along and approve the changes that they want to make. Does that mean that it it automatically encompasses the snow storage area or? Whatever else they've done? Is that what?
I, I don't, I don't think so, only because the, the snow storage where it's being discussed by conscom. And presumably by the planning board for the site plan approval process.
Yeah.
I don't really think that falls under our jurisdiction. I mean, it's certainly we can discuss.
Right, it, it, it's.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
If it's really not, it's really not germane to what we're talking about. They're talking about floodplain. They're talking about. The area where they're, where, where they're building the walls. To keep, stay within the footprint. But my, my question, you know, I, I'm looking at this, I'm saying, all right, if we agree to what they want to do. Does that automatically tell the other boards that we said it's okay, they could have snow storage there? That's, that's my question. You follow me?
I'm following what you're saying, yeah. And truthfully, I don't know.
But can I clarify?
Please do.
That. There are two small stories, snow storage areas, as was requested by both planning and conservation board to provide those small areas. They are temporary. They are places to snore still until it can be removed by the snow maintenance uh for the building. So. I, I agree that it's not really germane to this, but if, if just we're, if we can put that. Uh, to bed, the, the snow storage has been worked out with both boards. We've been in discussion with them. We've provided air, snow, small areas so that we can. You know, load it and work with it appropriately during storms and remove it from the site.
You said that the Conservation Commission requested it?
Yes.
Is that right, Jess?
Uh, yeah, we did not want a lot of the snow pushed into the flood zone at the top of the site, the northern end of the site. Because that inevitably melts and flows right into the wetlands. Um, but we haven't. I mean, I, we have not issued a permit yet. So.
Chairman, if I may.
Go ahead, please.
Uh, yes, so, Mr. Chairman, the snow storage issue is something that is ongoing with both conservation and planning board. But is not part of the, the floodplain overlay special permit. So nothing that this board does. Or talks about is, is really going to. Send any message or or any requirement to the other boards. So this is for the, the. Access area, the emergency access area, the retaining wall, as, as Drew has pointed out. Um, certainly, you know, we're happy to answer some questions, but the snow storage is really not part of this application.
Well, the reason I brought it up, well, you just heard why I brought it up. So that's, that was the question I had. I understand. What are? What our requirements are, what we're supposed to look at, what we're not supposed to look at. It just caught me off guard because last I knew, we didn't do that. We didn't have that.
And, and are you referring to when we came before you for the variances?
Correct.
Yeah, so, so the variances were, were a lot with in building height. And although there might have been some questions about snow storage, we, we hadn't even applied for. Site plan approval yet, which uh, as you know, the planning board has a lot to say about various things and. You know, snow storage is a very small area for snow storage. So if there's a big storm, it's going to be trucked out. There's going to be an operations maintenance um. Plan and, and that's again, within the realm of the planning board and the Conservation Commission.
My point is that when we had the last meeting with you guys, you said you weren't doing that. And now you are. So that's what raised the question.
No, I don't have any problem with the question being raised. I, I don't recall saying no snow storage, but, but that's. That's an issue that usually gets, you know, developed within.
Site plan review, that's right. I understand that. All right.
Mister Chair, I still have, I still have an issue with this being an open. Uh, permit request to the planning board. They met in June, July and August, and it's on their agenda again for September twenty-sixth. And I just, I'm just not comfortable. Um. Considering an application when it's already been an application for three months in another board.
I don't think it's the same thing, John. I think.
Well, that, that, it says.
Speak to that.
Plan, special permit, aquifer overlay district. And that's what we're talking about.
We're talking about.
That's what we're talking about. Samantha, please.
So, uh, part of what has happened during site plan review is it was noticed that they needed a special permit. So the project can't continue until they get the special permit from us. That's why it's been continued. Um, so basically. It, the planning board sort of just lobbed this part back to us.
I think you're also getting confused with the aquifer protection district, which is in front of the planning board. And the floodplain overlay district, which is in front of you. They're not the same. So that's today, it's about floodplain.
Yeah.
And this, this was requested by both conservation and planning to apply for this with. The Z B A to cover the necessary permitting for the project. So that's why we're in front of you tonight.
Yep. And, and Sam, I think they can't uh have their final plans. It's sort of that delicate dance between boards. You can't have a final plan before the planning board until.
Until we tell them whether or not they can put the wall up in the floodplain. I get that, yeah. You, you got, you good, John?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mister Garvin, you have more?
Uh, sure.
Well, if you have more, go ahead.
Yep. Um, no, I, that was the most of it. Um, let me just catch up myself here. Um, yeah, and just to note that. That's no storage is not in the floodplain district. I just wanted to clarify that as well. That was brought up by conversation. Uh, but other than that, unless you had any other specific questions. Um, as was described, that really the, the, the floodplain issues are limited to this corner of the. Emergency access and retaining wall coming around here, as well as this retaining wall.
Drew, Drew.
Small section of parking that.
Drew, the plan's not showing up. Sorry, it's not showing on the screen that.
My, my, my fault. There it is.
So.
Just this area here, this corner. Which is in the floodplain for the emergency access and retaining wall, as well as the parking. Uh, area here in the back and the related retaining wall there as well that uh rubs up against this floodplain line. So that, no, that's, that's all I have. And obviously, we're, we're here to answer questions and uh speak to the comments. Uh, which weren't many. I think the planning, uh, the Department of Public Works uh review. Agreed that our flood compensation. Was appropriate.
Yeah, I saw that.
Can you show us where the flood compensation is?
Sure. This is the area, sorry.
Right.
This is the area that uh the flood compensation.
We're not seeing it yet.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. There we go.
Got it? This area is being upgraded. When you, when you compensate for uh flood area. Uh, you need to do it. Per, per elevation, per foot. So that's why this kind of unique grading exists to, to actually capture uh. At least what is being taken by the areas I described. And that is shown in a uh chart. Here, per each elevation. And the associated square footage and volume of water that's being, that existed and that is being proposed and compensated for. So the D P Ws uh did not have an issue this. We have, we're a bit above by about six hundred cubic feet. Uh. That flood compensation.
Didn't I read that FEMA is changing your floodplain maps?
They will be updating.
So it, it, it won't, it wouldn't be retroactive anyway, so, okay.
They're always updating their maps. Um, you know, again, this is set to a specific elevation and was surveyed, so it is. It's, it's accurate to two seventeen point one is the magic flood elevation number uh in this area.
Okay. When was that floodplain line established? When was it last surveyed? The one that's before us.
Uh, let me see if I can find that reference. Just give me a moment. Bear with me if I can find it. No, we don't reference that on our, on our plans here that I see.
Mister Chairman, my question was, was made because I was wondering whether it was before the board when we approved this project. Was the same floodplain line even there?
Oh, the, yeah, the federal government doesn't move that fast, Ron.
No. No, 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 no. They, they, they survey, to be surveyed on to the plan. Were, was that plan before us? When we made the original uh approval of this plan?
I don't believe so. We, we didn't, we didn't approve. No, we didn't, that. This would have, we didn't do anything about this before um, our previous interface. We only had. Parking, the uh building height and um. Lot width. Lot, right, width. That's the only thing, two things we looked at. The plan, as they had it drawn up, would have gone to the planning board, not to us. That part would have gone to the planning board and it's still going to go to the planning board.
So, Mister Chairman, you're saying that the planning board had that flood, we, but we did not have that floodplain. Uh, line before us when we made those other approvals.
No, that was, that was a preliminary drawing, as I remember it.
Yes, Mister Chairman, if I may. Yes, yeah, so, so when we were before you for lot width and building height. Then, then the, the floodplain doesn't impact those things. And we were before you before we filed. Site plan approval. So I, I don't recall whether that line might have been shown on, on a plan that we showed you. But any plan that we showed you that had anything as strenuous to the, the lot width and the building height. You know, wouldn't have impacted those decisions. And, and once we filed site plan, of course, a lot happens. If anything happens in site plan that would require us to come back to you, we would. But you were the first stop. And so that, that line wasn't material to the, the variances we requested, we were requesting.
That's true.
The flood map was effective on two thousand and ten.
Okay. Thank you.
The flood map was, but, but was the line there for our inspection at that time?
That, that's not us, Ron.
No, I understand that. But it certainly could have influenced the way we decided to approve this um. This project in the first place. The, the fact that this project had been squeezed in here over the floodplain. And, and, and every way it's been squeezed into this, this lot. And that might have been something that we could have. Seen before. I know, I know it's water over the dam now, but.
No, all we, all we looked at, Ron. Was frontage and building height.
But the extent of the plan, though, was part of our, our, our uh, our um.
No.
Our purview.
No.
But, but I, Sam, I think I understand what Ron's saying, right? You know, at the time, we had three. Proposed variances before us, if there had been. Proposed variances before us. If there had been three variances and a special permit. You know, would that have changed our discussions at that time? I don't know. Um. But, but I, if, and I could be reading it, Ron, wrong, but is that kind of what you're getting at, Ron?
I'm just saying, since this has been squeezed in here, if we had known that it had been. It would also require a, a incursion of the floodplain at that time. We might have, that might have tempered our idea to give in to all this.
Uh, I'd have to.
All this excessive.
It, no, it really couldn't run because it, it really didn't have anything to do with us.
It wasn't pertinent to the issues at hand, but, but it certainly wasn't any kind of a, a hide the ball. I mean, this is. This is another permitting process that we have applied for. And, uh. And, and again, I, those, whether it was on the plan or not, that was, that was, you're the first step in the process. So. Once you go to site plan, you have a much more detailed plan. Things can change. And again, if anything that changed at the planning board that, or the Conservation Commission that required us to come back to you for. Your prior decisions or this decision would be back to you. But I, I, I understand you, you're concerned, but I think what I would stress is that. It's, it wasn't pertinent to those requests. And that's not to say that we would have intentionally did or didn't. It just isn't something that's part of that application process.
And I would just add to clarify, we've always shown a floodplain line on, on any plan we've submitted, including the original one to you guys. My only hesitation would be perhaps it wasn't, the two seventeen point num, point one number wasn't accurately shown on there. But we've always shown the floodplain line. We've always shown. Something very similar to what you're looking at today as far as including the floodplain line. And I would also just add. DPW doesn't have any issue with that, the line as we show it, or. The compensation we provide for it, or the, you know, the work we're showing inside of it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I noticed that the drainage from the, uh, parking lot and the roof of the building is funneled into a single pipe. That goes right into the bottom of the. Um, the addition you've made to increase the volume of the floodplain. Will that have any impact on the working of the floodplain and the fact that? Um, all that water will be coming. In kind of, you know, it's not just generally draining into it, it's coming in. Uh, will that, has there any been any thought or is there any concern we should have about that affecting the functioning of the?
That, the, the drainage system actually improves. Uh, the outflow to that area, meaning there is a large, uh, chamber system. That captures the water before it overflows to that outlet you're speaking to and recharges it into the ground. So only in extreme storms does that chamber system, uh, overflow and discharge into that area you're speaking to.
And that's like a leach field?
Yeah, and that is, um. Uh, I was just gonna jump, put it on the screen for clarification, but that is. You know, part of the intent of. The drainage design is to reduce those flows, you know, to the abutters as well as, and by default. It also reduces it to the area we're, we're discussing. Here's the chamber system. You can see there's, it's, it's many chambers. That capture that water. And then when they are, when, for extreme storms. This, this would capture up to the hundred year storm. For extreme storms, it does overflow and come out into that outlet. But the intent is to capture it all, including roof and parking and recharge it into the ground.
And it filters it also, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, there's, there's. And, and all the above, yes.
Alright, thank you. Um, we have any questions from the public? I don't see anything. Um. Mike, wanna make a motion?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, I'm, I'm happy to make a motion. Um.
Is there any, excuse me, is there any, any further discussion on the board? I'm sorry, go ahead, Mike.
Okay. Uh, in that case. I make a motion to grant a special permit to build within the floodplain overlay district pursuant to Arizona zoning bylaw section. Eight point two point five point eight point one dash two. And section eight point two point five point C point two. For DMG investments at two oh one to two oh five West Main Street.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Did we have a second?
I thought we did.
No. We just have a motion. We need a second.
I'm sorry.
Second.
Jess, I thought, I swear, alright, I'm losing it today. I'm sorry. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye. State your name, please.
Jessica Gino, aye.
Mike Gibbons, aye.
John Oles, aye.
Ron DeFilippo, aye.
Sam Goodwin, aye. You have your variance. I'm sorry. Wow, that's three for three.
Thank you very much.
Five last night, Sam. You got it?
Yeah. Alright.
Thank you all.
You're welcome. Uh, I make a motion, we close the public hearing for. DMG investments?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Jessica Gino, aye.
Mike Gibbons, aye.
John Oles, aye.
Ron DeFilippo, aye.
Sam Goodwin, aye. Alright.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is approval of minute. Me, meeting minutes from July nineteenth. I read them. I didn't see any issues. Did anybody?
Uh, there was one little correction, which I didn't catch, but somebody did.
Yeah.
Where?
It's right here. There was a small, I. A small, I had written is not concerned and it was she is concerned, so.
What happened?
It was a small typo.
Yeah, it said in one thing that I was, was not concerned about increased density near the pond. And then two sentences later, it had me reiterating that I was concerned.
Ah, okay.
Has this been corrected?
Who, who caught that? Cause it wasn't me.
It wasn't me.
Wasn't me.
John caught it.
Uh-oh. Wow.
Touches these.
Nice job, Ron. Nice job. Alright, I make a motion, we approve the meeting minutes for July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Jessica Gino, aye.
Mike Gibbons, aye.
John Oles, aye.
Ron DeFilippo, aye.
Thank you. Sam Goodwin, aye. Alright, um, next item on the agenda is board discussion. Uh, October. We are meeting. Let me get my book.
Eighteen?
Yeah, it's the eighteen.
Yes, sir, the eighteenth. That's your birthday, John.
Thank you.
I'll bring cake.
Yes, we're meeting and we're gonna do it live and we're gonna do it in the town hall. And we're going to go over our, um.
Rules and regs.
There you go. Well, not rules and regs, our guidelines.
Uh, they're called rules.
Rules and procedures, rules and regs. Same thing. Um.
You said we had a few things coming up for October?
We may, I can almost guarantee.
What?
Did I lose people?
No, I'm here.
Okay. Um, I do have one application I can almost guarantee. Will be submitted in time for that meeting.
You know what it's for?
Um, it is for. I believe it's a special permit. Uh, someone's house burned. It was, uh, nonconforming. They'd like to rebuild, but they want to add to it. So they need permission.
A house burned down in town?
This was on Wright Road in March.
Couple of months ago.
I don't remember that.
Yeah, it was, it had a fire response from about eight or ten towns.
It was, it was a thing.
March, alright. I wouldn't, I, alright, I, I, now I. I was probably in Mexico. That's why I don't remember. Alright.
You couldn't see the smoke?
No.
Um, so they are, are looking to be on the October meeting, um. And they can rebuild.
Alright.
Um. That is the only one I know of for sure. I don't know of anything else. Um. I did. So if we want to do both in the same meeting, I'm fine with that. Um.
I think we do, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I, I, I do. I, I think we'll probably spend. I don't know, forty-five minutes maybe going over our rules and regs. So I think, I think we'll be alright.
Alright.
I'm just, I'm just guessing, you know?
So I, I mean, I would even be fine if this is, the rules and regs discussion is something we do over the next few months. If it requires it, I, I think we spend the time on it and get it right.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, and I did talk with Carly, so if we needed to, we could, or if you wanted. There are two options for, if we wanted an extra meeting in October. Um, and, and Mike is right, it's gonna take a few meetings. Um, her recommendation is once we have them written is we should have town council look at them to make sure. We're not violating anything.
Well, we're, we, we normally don't run too much of a clock.
Mm-hmm.
On, uh. What's our, our agenda? We rarely go over an hour. Isn't that what we've got scheduled, an hour?
We can, we can have longer if we need to.
Yeah, well. The only problem with that is on occasion, the meeting room in the town hall is booked after us.
Um, I checked so far, we're the only, we're the only ones stays at this point.
Okay, so let's, let's do that then, let.
We'll just do both?
Yep. If, if we can't get it done in an hour and a half or two hours, then there's something wrong.
And, and if we, if we have to go into more than one meeting, my priority would always be public hearings first. And we hold this for the end of the meeting.
Yeah, if we gotta, if we gotta, if we gotta spread it out, we'll spread it out. But I don't.
Yes.
I don't anticipate a special meeting for us to come back into town hall, just to finish our discussion. We're go, I think we'll get it done in one evening.
No, I.
Yeah.
But I, I also double check just in case.
Good.
You never know. Um, and may, I recommend, I know the rules and regs are important, um, but if. We could start with the hearing application update, um, that would make my job easier. If we updated it.
Okay.
Um. For writing postings, um.
Well. The, the, your, um. Your application update, we can do that first. But it, it, that doesn't have any effect on the rules and regs, is that correct?
Well, the rules and regs, um, the older versions of the rules and regs do lay out how you apply. And if we change the application.
You have to change.
The rules and regs to reflect the update.
Yeah, so they both have to be done simultaneously.
Yes, but.
Alright, okay. Alright, I don't have a problem with that. Six P M?
Six P M. In person.
In person, wow.
October eighteen.
Perfect.
Alright.
Sam, I just had one other piece of housekeeping.
Yes, sir.
Ha, has everybody been able to access their emails?
No, we.
Yeah, I, I was having trouble. I finally got in, but.
Oh, good.
If you haven't, reach out to Sam because we, you know, we should be able to get in there.
Yeah, let me know if you're having difficulties, um, between Cindy and I, we can probably get you up and running.
What I, what I found out tonight is I had to, I had to delete the email. And reinstall it because it's a completely different server. I just wanted to change, I thought I just had to change my password. And it wouldn't even let me into the server.
Yeah, I know, it's Outlook, Outlook instead of the old server.
Yeah.
The DOS, the DOS email. Yeah, if anyone's having any trouble with like installing it on your phone, you can always go to the portal. Um, and that will bring you right to the new mail. And we don't.
Very, be, at the very bottom of the, um, the homepage for the portal.
Right.
Has staff webmail or something like that.
Created a page called, um, air dot M A dot U S forward slash email. And that has the directions for setting it up on your phone and it has a link to the portal too.
Where'd you put that?
If anyone's looking for the portal link, this is the town's website. It's way down here at the bottom.
No, what did you just say, Cindy? You put something where?
So I, I made a link called air dot M A dot U S slash email. Can you bring that up?
Um, sure.
Thank you. I mean, please. So that has the link to the portal and it gives you directions on how to set it up on your iPhone or on your, um, iPad.
But that won't work if, if you don't have Outlook or Microsoft Outlook, right?
Uh, this works, the directions here for setting up on your iOS device, that's for your phone.
Okay.
So you just download the Outlook app and log in.
Okay. So there's no cost, no cost to the Outlook app?
No, we have a paid email account for you, so you can use it.
I don't have, I don't have three sixty-five. I have, I have Office, but I don't have three sixty-five.
Yeah, we, we bought Office three sixty-five accounts.
Okay.
It used to be free, but it isn't anymore.
Fair enough.
I got into it and it is.
Remains that we can still go.
Go ahead, Ron.
So does it remain that we can, because I finally figured it out. I'm not ready for another change. So, so we can go to the town webpage and go all the way down to the bottom where it says staff webmail and we'll still get in?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, good.
Absolutely. That brings you up to the new login screen, not the crappy one.
Okay.
Good. Real fun.
Yeah, I, I, she, I. Couldn't get in. I've been trying to get in there for a couple of days. I can't get in there. So, and then Cindy told me what I had to do, so now I'll redo everything. Tomorrow and get it all put together.
Yeah, and call me if you have any trouble with that, Sam.
Okay, thank you.
Except for mid morning, I'm going to the dentist.
Okay. Anything else?
Any of you need a hand with some little things, you can call me and I can help walk you through it too.
Okay. Anything else for the board?
Nope.
Alright, I make a motion, we adjourn until. October eighteenth, six P M.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Jessica Gino, aye.
Mike Gibbons, aye.
John Oles, aye. Ron DeFilippo, aye.
Sam Goodwin, aye. Thank you all very much. Been a pleasure. See you in October.